The next item is item number 19, application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number 15-8323, block 531, lot 20, 383 Lafayette Street, in the NoHo Historic District and NoHo Historic District Extension. This is 383 Lafayette Street and 22 to 26 East Fourth Street. This is a simplified neoclassical style store and loft building designed by Gronenberg and Looktag and built in 1913, and a parking lot with a concrete block wall. This is an application to replace storefront infill, reconstruct the façades, install an entrance canopy, install rooftop mechanical equipment and bulkheads, and to construct a new building on the vacant lot.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The item is 383 Lafayette Street, and the application is to replace storefront infill, reconstruct the façades, install an entrance canopy, install rooftop mechanical equipment and bulkheads, and construct a new building on the vacant lot. 383 Lafayette Street is located at the southeast corner of Lafayette Street and East Fourth Street, and the building itself is located within the NoHo Historic District, and the vacant portion of the lot seen here is located within the NoHo Historic District Extension. And I'll introduce Arlene Feralta, also NYU student, who will start introducing the proposal for you.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name's Arlene Feralta, and I'm with NYU's Office of Government and Community Affairs. And, yes. Perfect. So I'll say that one more time. Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Arlene Feralta. I am with NYU's Office of Government and Community Affairs. And I just want to introduce the group that we'll be presenting today. We have Tom from NEAN Architects, who will be presenting on the scope of work. We have Elise from Pigots Quaysbar, who will be talking about the historical component. And then we have Scott Silk from Silman Architects. And so I kind of just wanted to run through what will be going into the building after we're done. We're really excited to get the project started. It is a building that we acquired in January, and at this point in time, what we've introduced into the building will be an academic and student support center, so it will really help facilitate our financial aid, our international studies, and financial aid counseling in a one-stop-shop. Right now, they're kind of dispersed all across campus. They don't really need to be in the court, but they can be kind of close enough for the students to get to. We've been really having a lot of conversations with the community, specifically the NoHo Bar's stakeholders, really talking through what might affect our neighbors, right? So really, the construction. And we've come up with a construction protocols agreement, and had many, many meetings just to kind of talk through the steps of this project. And so with that, it kind of, it up to Elise.
Good afternoon, commissioners. And Elise Quaysbar from Pigots Quaysbar, who is a conservation consultant on the project. And I'd like to say that it's honored to be in the first hearing for the new chair, so a forward to it. This is the building that we're talking about, 383 Lafayette. And I'd like to go through a little bit of the existing condition and the historic condition, because it informs the design process, and also what needs to be done to the facade of the building. Scott Hughes from Silman will talk about the need to rebuild the face brick. The building is in very, very poor condition in terms of its face brick, and we're going to be replacing a lot of the masonry, consolidating where it is possible. You see that there are light fixtures along the top, they'll be replaced. We're relocating flagpoles. The windows, many of them have been replaced. The originals were one-over-one wood windows, and they will be replaced. We're working with the staff to make sure that that meets the staff rules, so we're going to go through it. Just wanted you to know that that's happening. And then the ground floor is of particular interest in terms of its historical evolution. The main body of the building looks pretty much the way it did historically, but the base is very different. And even though in a photograph, it looks like these piers sort of belong to the rest of the building, the entire base of the building on Lafayette Street was constructed in the 1980s, 1988. So all of these piers were replaced. And you'll see in a moment, a historic photograph, it shows that there's a pier here, but that is not a pier that exists today. The detailing is different. Clearly, this brick, this has kind of a yellowish cast, and it does not match the brick above. On the Fourth Street side, many of the openings have been changed over time, and the brick has been aggressively treated with graffiti, so a lot of it's been braided, and the base of the building has been painted as well. And the base of all the way along here, this red brick, all the way along both sides, was installed in the 1980s. This is the historic condition. Building was constructed in 1913, and so there may have been changes between 1913 and 1942, but there's no record of that. So the base of the building, if you go back, this is what that entry looks like today. This is what it looks like historically. Here's that pier that isn't there now. And then the storefront that goes across Lafayette and turns the corner onto East Fourth. And there's a transom, a show window, it seems to have some weird sign thing in the base, and a base to the storefront. And the new storefront is a modern interpretation of this, but it does include a transom, show window, and base, which is kind of a typical historical arrangement with a modern detailing. And the corner, yes, historically, it's just a glazing? Yes. Yeah, there is a column in there, and there were columns that were replaced early on because the building is siding, subway is right near there. So the structure has changed a little bit on the inside, but, you know, there wasn't a column here. It's not unusual for storefronts to have glazing across the front and the structure behind. It comes in a lot of different ways. This is a tax photo on East Fourth Street to show what the empty lot used to have, two row houses that were demolished in the 1940s, this empty lot today. And I just would like to point out that in the corner here on 383, there was a canopy that went over the loading area. And it does not exist today, but we are proposing a new canopy that will work with a new entry on the Lafayette Street side. Just some condition photos, and here's a detail of that entry on Lafayette, which will be the main entry from the building going forward. You're starting to see a little bit of how that brick is kind of yellowish. And again, these are examples of the material that was replaced in the 1980s. Along East Fourth, there was a piece taken out, and they extended this storefront, again, this base, it's a red brick that was put in in the eighties. These two openings remain from the historic period, and this one does, this one has been altered. You can see its original shape, that a door was put in, and then the ones at the other end were just completely blown out and turned into storefronts. There was a double loading area here, and that's been filled in with non-matching brick, and there are places where the brick's been damaged by impact. One thing that I forgot to mention, that is important, we may go in there. Here's the diagram to illustrate Lafayette Street. Red indicates the material that was replaced in the eighties, and then along Lafayette, the base, the portion here where you worked it in, these were created from the original openings, and then this piece was broken in as well.
Those cornice pieces too, at the top of here, sorry, Madrigal?
Right. In this, in this location, some of that was replaced as well. So windows, oh, we do have, on the far south and the far east bays, where the elevators were, the freight elevators, instead of having this tripartite arrangement of windows with wood mullions, there was a brick pier that was added. And I think it was actually original on both sides, all the way down, and proposing to replace this configuration so that it lines up with the remainder of the windows, and just regularizing that aspect of the fenestration. On the top of the building, just to give you a few details, this used to be an open cove, and they were just filled in over time, same thing under the parapet. The southernmost elevator bulkhead was rebuilt at some point, doesn't match, and we're missing a piece of the coping that used to be here. The intention is to take, all of the brick, the face brick will have to come off and be rebuilt. The bulkheads will be brought down to this level, and then because the elevators are not in this location, we're proposing out to rebuild them.
Is given the entire building is turned off?
Yes, and Scott Hughes will describe the reason for that, and we'll leave there just a moment. So this is, just to give you an overview, this is a diagram of the existing building with the materials that are already on the roof. There's the bulkhead here, and then the other, the lot, some views of the roof escape. And the proposal, overall, will include restoration, replacement of the brick façades, modifications of the ground floor, changes in the storefronts, bulkheads on the roof, or elevators, stairs, and panels. And then in the empty lot next door, the building will be expanded to the east, that's there, and they'll scale the existing building and the adjacent buildings in the historic district. And this is just to give you a, you know, review where we're headed. I think, oh, it's in the middle. At this point, I think I'd like to kind of go over to Scott Hughes from Robert Silman's office to talk about the engineering aspects and the structural failures of the face brick.
Well, commissioners, I'm Scott Hughes with Robert Silman Associates. And I just want to walk you quickly through, we've done a number of studies on the facade of this building, and I just want to walk you through some of the conditions we observed. And these are just, real briefly, some overall shots of the building looking from west along East Fourth Street, and this is from the opposite corner looking to the southeast towards the building, and then this is further south along Lafayette, looking to the east. So here are some conditions that we observed. We engaged a pro-contractor to make some probes into the building to see how the backup brick was performing relative to how, what we were observing of the face brick. The face brick, as Elise said, has not performed well over time. There are numerous sort of ferris elements that have been attached to the building that have corroded and rust-jacked the face brick, and we wanted to see what, you know, what kind of shape the backup brick was in. So we conducted a series of probes that actually showed that the backup brick, while not particularly attractive, was in reasonably good condition, and that the mortar was reasonably stable. So from our observations, the required repairs were really limited to the face brick. So we observed conditions of piers. These are some of the other conditions, the limestone details that you see around the window surrounds and other details. The limestone fared probably the poorest of any of the masonry on the facade. This picture indicates the spandrel conditions of where some of this limestone detailing is occurring, and the infill where it could have the spandrel, you know, on four levels between windows. We have a shot of the parapet. The parapet has actually started to lean inward on the building, and I'll show them the next couple of slides. We were proposing actually to reconstruct the entire parapet. And as Elise pointed out before, this is the existing elevator bulkhead at the southwest corner of the building on Lafayette Street. So our proposal, based on these observations, is to remove and salvage as much of the existing brick at the spandrel conditions as we can for reuse on the vertical piers. The piers have fared relatively well. This is a low-bearing masonry building. These are not masonry-enclosed steel columns. These are actually low-bearing masonry piers. And the masonry has fared relatively well. We want to salvage as much of the existing brick at the spandrel conditions and reuse that for isolated repairs on the vertical piers. The limestone, as I said, has fared very poorly, so the proposal is to remove and replace to match the existing, and all of the limestone, that's the sort of purple areas that you see in quotes. As I said before, the proposal is to deconstruct and reconstruct the entire existing parapet with face brick to match the existing face brick conditions, with a couple of minor modifications, which is to continue the detailing, as Elise was pointing out before, the detailing at the parapet above to where we are proposing to remove the elevator bulkheads.
Is salvage possible on that parapet? It's impeccable, aren't we?
To the extent that we can, based on our observations, the vast majority of it will need to be replaced, but to the extent that we can, we're already taking part in that, and there's already the salvage campaign with the spandrel conditions.
Support from cement mortar, though, isn't it?
Yeah.
So you'd have, you'd have trouble staying out without it.
Right, yeah. Strongly. This is the condition of the Lafayette Street facade. Similarly, on the East Fourth Street facade, the plan is the same, salvage to the extent possible of the spandrel conditions, replace the limestone to match existing, use the salvage brick to patch, repair the piers, and reconstruct the existing parapet to match the existing.
Is your intention when they rebuild the piquet cornice, to make those open like they were originally, or just do a recess?
We'll get, there are slides that show that coming up, but yes, to recess is the proposed. So actually, with that, I'll turn this over to talk about modifications.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thomas Blom with NEAN Architects. The idea of the parapet, just to answer your question, is to put in a recessed brick panel at those locations. They used to be open, but for safety reasons, we want to close them off so that there's a solid parapet condition. As Scott and Elise mentioned, we are proposing that the bulkheads from the future removed elevator machine areas are removed, both on the East Fourth side as well as on the Lafayette side here. And basically, those parapets are completed in kind with the existing condition. And then we'll talk about the window condition in a minute at those elevator shaft planes. What we'd like to talk about now really is the design proposal for the ground floor area, as well as the future addition. There are basically so many alterations that have happened over the course of the years of that existing ground floor fabric, both with painting, existing brick, graffiti, remediation, replacement brick, in addition to a series of altered openings, that it was our feeling that it would be much more, much cleaner solution to rebuild all of this ground floor area in the masonry. We will replicate the same brick color as is being used as replacement brick on the upper area. You can see that there's a sort of accent brick here, a darker color, that we will replicate and continue to use, as well as restore the openings to the historic condition, really trying to make sure that both the opening size as well as the window condition are restored. You can see here that we are proposing removing the original loading dock doors here, as well as, you know, some of the alterations that have occurred, and taking the historic condition really and continuing all the way to the east. Likewise, at the opposite corner here on the west, what we're proposing is actually the same brick treatment with the accent, and creating enough of a brick surface here so that the assertion of this new glass storefront is bracketed by masonry on either side. There is only a single entry now for this complete, for this facility, that's a single tenant, NYU, is actually occupying the entire building as well as the addition, and will operate as a single urban facility, both for reasons of security, as well as to get the entrance away from some of the neighbors. There is a single entry at the southwest corner, on the Lafayette Street side, or the busier street, and not, no longer any entry condition on the East Fourth side. Likewise, in the historic condition, you saw a storefront here with multiple tenants and multiple storefronts. Again, this is a single user now. This is actually a student services facility at the ground floor. We want it to be as welcome and inviting for those students as possible. Therefore, we're using a substantial amount of glass, replicating basically the rhythm similar to the historic condition, creating a transom zone here with a slightly different translucent glass, continuing the limestone cornice and a granite base across the top and bottom to link them to the masonry on the other side.
Could you just indicate on this level where you're removing historic fabric?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will show you right here. So this is the historic condition, the top elevation, storefront, multiple entries. This is the current existing condition. So as Elise said, even though this brick pier appears both in the existing and historic condition, we believe this to be reconstructed. And then the proposed down.
To answer your question, on Lafayette Street, none of the fabric on the ground floor from this level down is historic, it was built in 1980s.
What's the material of the door surround under the canopy at the new entrance?
It's actually a pin and metal.
And what's the wood?
Here is the elevation on East Fourth Street, again, the historic condition, with the canopy over the loading dock doors. The existing condition, as you can see, even though some of these openings were maintained, they were in for the new, the canopy windows, others were altered. One of the doors was kept and not removed. And the proposed condition, again, trying to restore that to what the original condition was, continue that all the way to the east, and have a new storefront. We are proposing an additional structural bay of storefront, which actually works well with the planning of the interior. There is basically a kind of lobby and waiting area here for students, and a zone within the floor plate and the floor plan coincides well with two structural bays here. So our proposal is actually to extend that storefront a little bit to the east. To get a little bit into detail about what the storefront construction is, it is an insulated glass storefront. There is a transom area here. The transom area is structurally glazed, in other words, there's no metal appearing on the top of it. So you can see here that it's a very smooth surface. There will be sealant joints there. We're proposing a translucent glass. In the historic condition, there was actually a decorative glass in that transom. Down in the lower area here, this is a clear glass with a metal cap that articulates the frame of each last light. Again, we're doing that not only to try and link some of the mullionation to the historic windows, the replacement windows, which would be painted the same color, as well as to sort of give this a kind of vertical dimension. We have a steel painted channel above here underneath that limestone coping. The channel, again, is just to help with the perception of kind of horizontal structural support. And then the granite base, the water course, the lift. There are two security camera positions here at the corner of the building to provide security at the street.
So the finish on the granite?
Correct. So this is the granite at the port, at the water course, which is the same on the existing building as well as the addition. At the entry condition, we are proposing a, not only this brick condition, but a painted steel surround, which basically cuts an opening into that masonry, into which we insert an aluminum and glass entry door. There is a solid panel here with an exit door within it, and a painted aluminum canopy. The idea behind this entry is really that it is a new insertion, and therefore, a modern language. It has a similar form to some of the language that's going on in the interior of the building. This kind of faceted canopy is reminiscent of the desk for the student services area. So we're trying to establish a language of NYU or the student services that has, you know, a modest presence on the street. Again, this is the single entry, and we think that a canopy will help students who are coming from Washington Square, primarily from the west, to come to the corner of the intersection of Lafayette and East Fourth, and clearly see that the entry is on Lafayette to the south. And as Elise mentioned, there was a canopy condition over there.
Okay, are you going to speak about the new building now, the enlarged one?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay. Just some fixture cuts about the canopy lighting and some security lighting. Again, as Elise mentioned, we're working with staff to make sure that the window replacement, which are aluminum clad windows, meet all the rules and regulations of window replacement. Here's the new. At the corner conditions here, where the former elevator shaft was, we're proposing that actually the windows are, sorry, so there's the elevator shaft with the brick pier, the elevator shaft with the brick pier, and our proposal is to basically replicate the historic condition in those bays. So this is the East Fourth side, this is the Lafayette side. Each of these bays now is identical to the adjacent. Also, on the existing building, we're proposing two flagpoles. There are three currently on the building, two on the East Fourth, one on the Lafayette side. Those flagpoles, again, help identify this as an NYU building. Really, we're trying to clean those up and make them symmetrical so that they are supported entirely within the brick piers. Okay, for the new building, again, this is really an addition to this existing building. It is operating as a single facility. There is no entry condition at this building. There is also no elevator core in this building. It uses the elevator core that's within the existing building. The floor plates align, basically the functions of the upper floors as well as the ground floor are the same. To give you a little background, the addition actually is in the NoHo extension while the existing building is in NoHo. We did a little analysis of the existing fabric. In the extension, it is quite varied. There's a series of scales and colors. Masonry buildings are primarily tenement apartments. On the corners of the NoHo area, there are slightly larger buildings, although they are still of masonry construction. We did notice that there's a variety, however, of openings and decoration and language in those existing areas in both districts. In both districts, not only is there a variety of opening types, so larger openings in addition to punched openings, but various decorative elements, metal, stone, et cetera, that really start to work their way throughout the entire building. As Elise said, there were two row houses adjacent to the existing building that's being restored. Those were demolished and the new addition is going in its place. Current existing condition, that's a vacant lot, actually a plantworks store. And the future condition's here with a new addition and the rooftop bulkhead. The driving design concept behind this addition really was to continue this idea of a masonry base with smaller openings and larger areas of masonry, turn that masonry up actually as it butts the adjacent apartment building, include punched openings in that masonry as well as a sort of street presence with glass coming a little bit lower. And then on the upper floors to replicate the kind of scale and articulation that one sees in the neighborhood in a modern way and really take some cues from the existing fenestration of the adjacent building. So here's a view of the existing condition and the new. Again, clearly this is a new building, so we're not matching the brick or a new piece of construction. You're not matching the brick. That brick, however, sort of continues the masonry feel of the adjacent building and it turns up with punched openings here. These windows here come down to this level with granite water course there. There is a translucent glass up to this intermediate horizontal. There's a bit of a private function going on behind that, so there wanted to be some privacy for the interior spaces there with clear glass above that. The upper facade is really a combination of aluminum windows, zinc panels in here, and glass fiber reinforced concrete frames. I'll talk a little bit more about the details of those. But the general idea is that the scale of this kind of articulation is not only similar to the adjacent building, but things that are going on architecturally within the neighborhood. So again, an overall elevation along East Fourth, that brick coming up here, kind of scale and amount, percentage openness of the addition really being very similar in nature to the adjacent building. Here's a series of details on the construction and the design of this facade. Again, really, these are, these are decorative glass fiber reinforced concrete members that are attached to the building. Really, they're meant to match in the color of the limestone of the adjacent building. They are formed in various angles, so you can see here that the angle changes and progresses from wider here to narrower here, trying to basically communicate this idea of a more closed condition on the east side, more open on the west side. The aluminum windows here have a similar proportion to the adjacent as well as an intermediate horizontal that occasionally occurs, again, to replicate the scale of the window openings. Below is a formed zinc panel. That zinc panel, not unlike things that occur in the neighborhood, is a kind of decorative texture with some depth. It also has a nod really to the kind of brick detail of the parapet adjacent. It's a planned condition, showing you the variation of those concrete fin elements. That whole facade is set back from the ground floor condition, so there is a slight setback of these three floors from the ground floor condition, which is basically flush with the adjacent. And a couple of details through both the more open and the masonry piece. Here you can see the kind of profiles of some of these GFRC panels, the zinc windows. On the south side of the addition, there's currently a vacant lot right adjacent, so this is currently visible from the sidewalk. There is a jog in the lot line, so one townhouse was there, a second was there, and the representative jog in the parking line is shown here. There's actually an exit stair condition behind this brick piece, so the brick from the front, it's actually wrapped around the back on the east side. The window fenestration, that's very similar to the east fourth, occurs here again on the south side with the similar articulation of GFRC. Also seen here is the cooling tower enclosure, which is an acoustic enclosure that's going on top of the existing building, as well as a attenuator that sits on top of the actual cooling tower.
Commissioners wanted you to know, you'll see later on, that this is a cutaway view so that you can see what the south elevation looks like on the building, but in fact, there's a big parking structure right here in front of it, so you won't actually see the facade quite this way, but we wanted you to understand how this is constructed.
So here's a roof plan, which basically shows you the condition at these two properties with the setback of the property line and then above the first story, it setbacks, it sets back to this point. Here is the extent of the roof construction. There is the cooling tower enclosure. There is the elevator overrun with the machine group and the exit stair that goes to the left. We are holding this back from the parapet, it's twelve feet. There's also a small mechanical bulkhead here for exhaust air. Okay, so a couple of views of the existing condition. We did mock-up the rooftop equipment on top of the existing building with scaffolding and netting. These pictures reflect those mock-ups with the rendered proposal adjacent here. There's a slight view of the bulkhead there. Looking down Lafayette to the south, again, there's, you know, the existing building. The bulkhead appears not to be visible from here. Looking up Lafayette, again, no visible bulkhead, but you'll see obviously the insertion on the ground floor. And from the south, adjacent parking structure. We also have a series of sequence photos walking through the sidewalks here, just a couple of foot through them.
All right, I think we can, if it's okay, I think we can take questions. Yes? Thank you. A very thorough presentation. Yes, questions for the architect or for the team? Any questions? All right, no questions now? Then in that case, we will take public testimony, but first I will just read into the record, Community Board Two's recommendation. I'll just highlight some of the major points. The new building proposed is well-designed and will enhance the Lafayette Street building as well as the historic district. And we applaud the applicant NYU for respecting the height of the surrounding buildings by not building as high as permitted under the zoning. Consequently, with so much, we've gone to next point, so much continuous glass, storefront seems to crawl out of the building and the upper floors appear to float by magic. And they've gone on to say that the storefront transom should have more articulation. And then finally, it says, "Therefore, be it resolved that Community Board Two recommends approval of the new building, the rooftop mechanicals and bulkheads, and the restoration of the windows, parapets, and masonry, but recommend," they recommend interrupting the proposed expansive coursing of glazing with more articulation and divisions so that the storefront is more anchored to the facade of the building's upper floors and not to appear to float as proposed. And they also recommend approval of the two NYU banners, but recommends denial of the superfluous distracting a nonhistoric marquee proposed for the college administrative building. All right, there are speakers on this item.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. 383 Lafayette Street's aesthetics rely heavily on its simple yet elegant massing. Its four bays of group fenestration, brick piers, and brick banding are specifically called out in its designation report. For this reason, HDC asks that the rusticated piers remain on the ground floor of this building. Without them, the facades above the ground floor appear to awkwardly float. Regarding the new construction, HDC finds the design and rhythm a sympathetic neighbor to the historic building. That said, we discourage the use of GFRC as proposed for the sunscreen and suggest that a higher quality material more fitting to the district such as terracotta be used on this otherwise commendable marriage of old and new design. And last, the presence of a canopy orients pedestrians to the building's presence on the street, rendering the signage flags superfluous and HDCs that the canopy be designed to draw less attention to itself. Additionally, we would applaud a smaller scaled rooftop bulk. Thank you.
The next speaker, Amanda Davis.
Good afternoon, and I'd just like to welcome Chair Srini Vasan to the LPC. My name is Amanda Davis, the Director of Preservation and Research at the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation. We were fine with the design and scale of the new building, but GVSHP feels that the proposed glass ground floor at the existing 383 Lafayette Street building does not visually anchor the solid masonry upper floors and would benefit from exterior masonry or metal piers to divide each bay on the ground floor. The introduction of these stronger vertical elements would help to unite the ground floor with those above. The addition of a bulkhead might also help add some visual weight here. The marquee at the Lafayette Street entrance also feels neither appropriate nor necessary, and we would recommend that it be removed from the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Zella Jones.
My name is Zella Jones. I'm president of NoHo Bowers Stakeholders Incorporated, a membership of 300 property owners and residents in NoHo. And I'm here to attest to an agreement memorandum of understanding between NoHo Bowers Stakeholders, NYU, and non-members of NoHo Bowers Stakeholders that are living next to and contiguous to this site. We have held meetings over the last three years regarding the potential for this site and over six years for NYU's intentions for the site overall. It's had many manifestations. We approve of the design as it is put together. There are several features that are very, very important to NoHo. I hope you would keep in your, in mind here. The East Fourth Street side is largely residential, actually all residential, with the exception of the Merchants House Museum, which is on the opposite side of the street. The testimony about it being smaller scale and smaller windows is absolutely true, and the neighbors and property owners on that street really appreciate the design of the new building for those aspects. It was also extremely important that the rooftop mechanicals be housed and insulated enough so that the HVAC systems and anything else that goes on in that building does not disturb the neighbors that are around it. Thus, the higher mechanicals and the larger bulk at the center of the building for those purposes. And then third, it was very, very important for, excuse me, for the residents to establish entrance on Lafayette Street. The additional population that would be entering on East Fourth Street really would be disruptive to the neighborhood. Therefore, the community totally agrees with the treatment of the entrance on Lafayette Street and the calling out to the fact that it is an entrance. And I will additionally add that the Landmarks Preservation Commission has allowed and recommended marquees in several buildings in NoHo within the last 24 months. None of them, all of them, more obstreperous than the one is that is currently on Lafayette Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Any more speakers? Any more questions for the applicant, or shall we go into discussion? I'm sorry, would you like to respond to anything said at the time? Yes.
Just a quick comment about the GFRC, the use of GFRC. Really, the GFRC, modern GFRC is very, very formidable and quality material. The amount of coloration that we can adjust will allow us to match the limestone very well. The reason why we're using GFRC is not only from weight on this facade, which is not a load-bearing facade, it's basically curtain wall, but also because the variation of these forms as they go across really is very inefficient to use a cast product, which can vary. If it was to be stone or terracotta, there would be far more joints and more complexity than stone.
Yes, Roberto has a question.
You're saying the whole facade needed to be repaired, or you have, so in the end, is it just the first floor?
We're going to knock that down.
Right, these pictures.
Oh, okay, I see. I remember this.
Yeah.
Was everything?
The piers are largely remaining. We're going to salvage, to the extent that we can, brick from the spandrel conditions to repair conditions of piers. Otherwise, the spandrels are going to be reconstructed with new material to match the existing, likewise as the parapet. So the amount of the existing historic fabric that's going to be retained above the ground floor is largely just the piers. The rest will be just new to replace existing, or to match existing.
This is the existing brick from the building. This is the match, so it's a, you know, it's a pretty, it's a pretty good match that we've been able to find.
I just also note that the reason why these spandrels actually need to come out is because the lintels that support the brick spandrels are deteriorated. So they need to be replaced.
So that's like nine, is that 100%? What is that, 90%?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent. I'm saying it's fifty.
No, I would say, yeah, of the existing to remain, it's probably around 15 to 20%. It's probably going to be 85% replacing.
Wow. And so that, and that, and that's because the face brick is so bad that you have no choice.
Yeah, the face brick has failed very poorly. It was poor workmanship and it was, you know, water infiltration over the years.
And is that, that 15 and 20% is that of just the brickwork, or that includes just the facade, which includes the windows as well?
No, I'm talking strictly of the masonry.
Strictly the brickwork is, okay, strictly the masonry.
So only 15 to 20% of the existing facade, great part, remains?
Will remain.
And, okay, and there's nothing that can be done, other than taking.
All right, so, but then just in this diagram, what you've shown is the piers are solid in a particular color, which is using all the original brick, correct?
There will be some repairs to the existing piers, but a large part of the existing face brick piers will remain.
So that's your 15 to 20% is the piers?
That's a 15 to 20%.
Correct. Spandrels will be complete replacement, parapet will be complete replacement.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the applicant? Yes?
Do you do random tests on the brick to find out if there?
Yeah, there was a series of tests that were done to find strength.
Why not replace it all?
Durability. Well, the tests that were performed actually found the brick to be, it would meet, it was relatively matching existing standards in terms of strength, durability, and absorption. So those were the testing that we did on the original, the existing brick.
All right, any other questions? All right, we can move to discussion. I think that, and we've heard testimony on this, that there are many aspects of this proposal which I think are very positive for the historic district. I think there's the element of restoration for a building that's been prominent, and I think there's been clearly an attempt to try and salvage as much as they can of the facade and reuse that and try to emulate its historic nature. I think the enlargement on the vacant site is, I think, again, very helpful in sort of reinforcing the character. It's a vacant lot right now, and I think the idea of doing a modern interpretation along with this restoration project for the main building works well together, and in fact, it doesn't try to extend it, and so the existing building still reads as, as it was initially and original in the district. initially and original in the district. Open it up for discussion. Maybe, Michael, you'd like to comment, particularly the preservation aspect?
First of all, I'm sure the folks at the Merchants' House Museum are going to be very happy to know that there's not a tower going in across the street. You can cast them in the shadow all the time. But the other, your choice of materials to me is superb. The choice of GFRC for those particular applications I think are excellent. You'll get much better performance actually than you would have with limestone. I think this is a commendable application. Thank you.
Yes, Michael.
All right, I too think it's a nice job, and I'll talk about some detail aspects. I think that in the broadest scope.
Yes.
What we have here is a building that is being in large measure rebuilt.
Mm-hmm.
It's not really a restoration, it's a reconstruction of the existing building for the most part. That said, there's two ways you can do it. You can put it back the way it was, or you can kind of fix it. And it looks like you're taking option B. You're moving the bulkheads back, you're taking out the defining aspects of the old elevator shafts, and I think that too, although not the best, I wouldn't say that's kind of the best preservation end, but we're talking about a reconstruction, so you can make your choices, and I think it's a reasonable one to do the perfecting option as opposed to the putting back warts and all. But within that kind of conceptual framework, there's a few things that I would suggest that, which I think is an appropriate framework, that you would examine perhaps with staff. Number one, I think that the parapet can be reconstructed accurately while still maintaining safety by putting some kind of mesh on the inside or some other kind of openings that would be less visible. If you're going to go for a reconstruction, do it right, I think, especially for the parapet, which is the most dynamic part of this building. I would say to please try to do it right.
Right, because right now they're planning to infiltrate, right?
Right.
They'll have some relief and recess, but, okay.
But seeing through it, seeing air through it, I think is a significant aspect of the original design. Secondly, I think that the design of the entry, the new entry to the building, takes an odd turn, you know, because whereas for the rest of the masonry, you're pretty much restoring what was there, at the entry, you're leaving a kind of raw cut and lining it with steel. And I think it's okay to do a modern entry, I think the marquee is okay, but I think that the choice to not use the masonry reconstruction to somehow either put back what was there or change it in some way that makes it a little bit clearer that it's not just a kind of a restoration of the cut, it didn't look developed and thought out to me. Lastly, the storefront, I think it's totally legitimate to do a modern interpretation storefront. But I think what, the one aspect of the interpretation that could be a little bit more reflective of the original, if not imitative of it, is the fact that this storefront chose not to have the glass go proud of the structure. It in fact signaled the structure with the insertion of what looked like cast iron piers centered on the brick pillars above. And I think that the absence of some transfiguration of the structure to the facade is something that was noted in the testimony, and I think it, I think you can, I think you can do that without bringing down a masonry pier, but by simply varying the rhythm and detailing of your metal storefront to create a, I mean, it's funny, because yours, most storefronts these days have bigger pieces of glass than the old one. You actually have skinnier pieces of glass than the old one. And your rhythm is very insistent, and it's very much determined by the windows above, but I, and I think that there's an order to that, but I think that it sacrifices a sense of base that both the testimony and I personally think would enhance your building without making it one scintilla less contemporary. I think that the proposed addition, the new building, is, takes the point of view of, we're going to make a new building that doesn't look anything like our building but works with it subtly, and I think that's an appropriate way to go, and as such, I think the, the only thing I would say about it is that it really doesn't have a strong kind of entry, but I understand why that is, and it kind of, I don't know, there's something about the non-entriness of that that kind of bothers me about it, but I think it's, I think it's appropriate, and the back stuff is fine, the roof stuff I think is fine.
Thank you, Michael. Yes, other comments? Yes, of course.
The issue of the perforations in the parapet are, is something that troubles me because if you, the safety issue aside, once you've penetrated all the way through the parapet, then you've got another wash surface that you have to worry about with at least two joints, and at the roof line, that can be the kiss of death. And so, you know, I'm satisfied that a setback far enough to replicate, at least visually, the original is fine.
Are you? I think it's even possible.
Okay, all right, Dan, and then Roberta?
Okay. I think the new building works very well, and I also think the restoration of the, I'll call it that, whatever we might call it here, of the existing building in general works very well. I only have two points, which basically echo Michael's pretty much, but one is some increased verticality. I was thinking just the corner, at least the corner pier, but I hear what he's saying about, you know, maybe just using a variation of the descending cast iron appearance piers, so to speak, there, and varying it so that it gave that same sense. It's an architectural decision, but I just feel like there's, it needs some break, and at least at the corner. And with regard to the entrance, I, I actually feel uncomfortable of the marquee just because it seems to really call and undo attention to itself. I'd like something simpler, myself just straight, but I don't feel entirely that the entrance is satisfactory, but otherwise, those are the only two negatives I really have in this good project generally.
Okay.
Yes, Roberta?
I think that overall, it works. I, of course, was looking for more restoration and somehow to use more of the existing fabric, the brick.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, we're not experts, and they have hired an expert, so I'm going to go with the fact that it can't be done, and so this is what we have. So I think that with that in mind then, that what they have or what they present is appropriate. But I also think that the entrance, that they should look at the entrance again in terms of, if you're doing it and if we're pretending that it's a restoration, then I think that we need an entrance that, or a canopy and entrance that's more appropriate to the philosophy of the design of the former building, if it were historic. That's what I think. And I think the addition is okay and acceptable. It's not like the existing building, but I think that just in terms of the divisions and how, and the rhythm of it, even though it's asymmetrical, that it still could work with this.
Any other, yes, Chris?
A good case has been made for, actually, a significant replacement of much of the brick, and the new build, the addition is done.
Okay, all right. And I would agree with some commissioners in terms of the entrance as well. I think maybe perhaps they should just re-study that. And in terms of the marquee, if, and we've heard testimony that there's marquees elsewhere in the district, it may be worthwhile to photograph some of them so we can sort of understand how that relates to the district overall. So maybe the areas that they should look at are the entrance, the response in terms of just, you know, the elevation itself, as well as the marquee. And in terms of the corner and the storefront, I understand some of the concerns that have been raised about whether it's floating, whether there's some way to anchor it, whether there's a way that the structure is, can be at least discerned from outside. That may not take place right now, and I think you can look at that as well. And I think, I think those are the three areas, right? All right, good, so when, yes, you have one more. Oh, yes, and.
I forgot one thing.
Yes, okay.
Security cameras are all over this damn building, and they're really big, and there are really a lot of them.
Yeah.
And we've seen lots of security camera jobs where they're smaller and more subtle. That can be done with staff.
Okay, that can be done with staff because they know the.
We're going to bring it back.
Well, they can show us that as well. All right?
Cameras, cameras.
Okay, so we'll bring them back.
Okay.
Okay, but we'll close the hearing.
Okay.
Move a second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Hi.